2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development: Push for Accelerated Progress Towards the SDGs. So this is a second in a series of special civil society town halls with His Excellency, Mr. Chaba Koroche, who is, as you know, the President of the 77th Session of the United Nations General Assembly. The first town hall, perhaps some of you attended that, that was held on the 2nd of December in 2022. And at that town hall, President Koroche outlined his vision of providing solutions to the world's problems through solidarity and also sustainability, science, youth, involvement, and also partnerships. So if you missed it, it's still possible to watch that recording on UN TV. And I really, I think we all would like to thank the President of the General Assembly, Koroche, for again convening this town hall. It shows how much he cares about addressing civil society and also hearing from you. Town hall is not part of the formal preparatory process of the 2023 SDG Summit as such, and no official outcome is expected following this event. This town hall is an important opportunity for civil society organizations, as well as youth representatives and also academia, like you, to bring your perspectives and your data based on deep experience. We are going to be listening. We really look forward to hearing how your experience can inform deliberations of member states in preparation for this very important summit. And we look forward to your insights on how we can all work together to achieve the SDGs. We cannot do it alone. Before I turn the floor over to the PGA, as we call him, the President of the General Assembly, he has a nickname, I would like to note that today's event is available in the six official languages of the United Nations, so please tune in to the language of your choice. And in the room, you can, especially if you are listening in another language, you can use the earpieces that are at your seats, and you will find the choice of language on the desk itself. And for those of you watching online, you can select the language you want to hear at the dropdown menu on your screen, accessible by clicking the globe at the bottom. And those of you who are posting on social media, we encourage you to follow us on Twitter, @UNDGC_CSO and @UN_PGA. And please use the hashtag UNwithcivilsociety. You see, you see it very conveniently on the nameplates in front of you. And it is now my honor once again to introduce the President of the General Assembly, Mr. Chaba Koroche. And let me just say a few words about his background. He's had, held various service posts in his home country of Hungary, and he has dedicated his professional life to public service. He was the Head of Mission to Greece and also the United Arab Emirates, and also served as Ambassador and Permanent Representative of Hungary to the United Nations, as well as Vice President of the 66th Session of the UN General Assembly. He has a deep history of engaging with civil society. He played a vital role in the development of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development and the Sustainable Development Goals as co-chair of the Open Working Group of the General Assembly, where he worked alongside civil society to ensure the inclusion of the voices of diverse stakeholders. His efforts have been critical in ensuring that the SDGs remain at the top of the global agenda. And his respect for civil society is evident in his current presidency, as time and again he highlights the importance of including civil society representatives and perspectives in impact-focused discussions. First, we will hear his remarks, and that will be followed by statements from several civil society representatives. And then we will open the floor to questions, and I emphasize questions, please, and not statements. And then we will hear concluding reflections from His Excellency, Mr. Mithin, the PGA of, sorry, the PR, PR, Permanent Representative of Ireland, and Her Excellency, Ms. Al Tani, the PR of Qatar. And we look forward to a dynamic discussion. Excellency, the floor is yours.
Thank you much indeed. USG Melissa Fleming, my good friend. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning, New York and Americas. Good afternoon, Europe and Africa. Good evening, Asia and Australia. You're welcome on board. My special thanks go to the Department of Global Communications, Dessa and SDG Action Campaign, and OHC HR for their supporting in organizing this second town hall meeting. As the 77th Session moves into its second half, the General Assembly is preparing for the SDG Summit, as we heard just a couple of minutes ago in September, which will be the pivotal event of the High Level Week, the most important event in September. Dear colleagues and friends, a cornerstone of my presidency has been to involve actors from outside of the UN into our work. I've held several consultations with scientists, youth representatives, civil society organizations, with many of you personally involved, as well as private sector actors and financial institutions. My aim is and remains in bringing the outside knowledge to improve the quality of policymaking by ensuring the decision-makers have the better understanding of the issues they are creating policies for. My expectation is that this approach contributes to the more evidence-based proposals on how to address the challenges we are facing today. It worked very well in the run-up and during the March UN Vote Conference, where with your help, we achieved a breakthrough after 46 years. Something similar is needed on a number of issues in the forthcoming months to help real transformation of end-crisis management in this world. Recent reports, as we heard from USG Fleming, recent reports tracking the progress of the achievements on the SDGs by 2030 have contained sobering conclusions. We are seriously off-track due to the combination of a complex and intersecting crisis. In recent years, we have been, we have even regressed on some SDG targets. So not the progress is lacking, but actually we are moving backward. I still see youth and diversity and equity as very strongly prominent figuring notions from your side. Thank you much indeed. Then let's move to the next question. What are the biggest challenges in the way of achieving SDGs? You will see here multiple choices. Please distribute 100 points among those options what you see: armed conflicts, geopolitical divides, inequalities, inadequate financing, lack of political will, corruption, inability to measure implementation, or other. If you wish, you may give all 100 points of yours to one of the options, or you distribute according to your liking. If we cannot turn around inequalities, the trends of growing inequalities, the whole agenda will be in jeopardy. Just today, I saw the latest figures that the largest and fastest-growing inequalities in the world in terms of continent are now in Africa. The continent that very badly needs a sustainability transformation. Let's go to the third question then. What transformative changes are necessary to get the SDGs back on track? Please again distribute your 100 points among the options: SDG stimulus, meaning increased financing, IFI, International Financial Institutions Reform, beyond GDP, it's a concept which is one of the targets in the SDG 17, which means renewed economics, multi-stakeholder partnership, political will, restoring the credibility of commitments.
He, Africa, from Kenya, and he will share his views today through a pre-recorded video.
Excellencies, distinguished delegates, esteemed colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mayana Bryan. I am an innovator, environmentalist, and an advocate for global climate justice and the SDGs. As a young Kenyan and African, I stand before you today, not just as a representative of my generation, but as a voice of our collective future. In a vast expanse of human history, we find ourselves at decisive crossroads. My niece, who was born in 2020, will be 10 years old in 2030. Is this the world that we really want her to inherit? Our world is in dire need for transformative action. The SDGs are our urgently needed blueprint. Yet, as we gather, we must face the stark reality that we are falling short on its implementation. It is thus an additional debt burden on countries. This is especially important for Africa, where many countries struggle with high level of debt and limited physical space to fund development initiatives. Grant-based financing will support our, to overcome these challenges, and helping countries to invest in areas critical to achieving the SDGs. Ladies and gentlemen, Africa is not only the youngest continent. Africa is so vibrant, poised to redefine its narrative and chart a path forward. It is also full of underestimated and underbided potential. It is time for you to take Africa seriously on the global stage. Hence, we-
... defunded the state in many parts of the developing world and has accelerated south-to-north wealth and resource extraction. There is today persistent empirical evidence that developing countries finance developed countries through illicit financial flows, through debt repayments that are not being restructured due to the absence of a multilateral debt workout mechanism, through asymmetrical trade rules, capital outflows due to the inability to regulate finance, reserves that defend currencies depreciating sharply due to monetary tightening. And these are just a few examples out of many. So we have to locate that it is in this context of resource strain that the global narrative of the SDG financing gap is created, leading to the SDG's call for an SDG stimulus to scale up affordability.
Our organization, where we do have to counter the story of lax with a story of hope and possibility. Our story is centered on investing in LCC communities, as in the indoor communities everywhere, and protecting and building on the structural and complex knowledge. Our goal is a goal for build on high-dimensional strength as a part of me to sustain. It is a story of aggressive transition toward food sovereignty and the realization of a life of food. Food systems need to produce and process and make a living, a diverse range of foods in ways that nurture the land, soil, and water, and that protect people livelihoods and the culture. In adopting a way of economic practices, we can stay on the complex set of objectives such as the 2030 Agenda. If we think about the system in which food is grown and distributed and developed on multiple fronts, in that system for change, we can reduce greenhouse gas emission, conserve fresh water, protect biodiversity, empower women, and increase farm productivity by reducing input costs.
And as was the case in the first PGA Town Hall, we have a diverse group of representatives joining today, and we really look forward to hearing from you. In an effort to ensure that we hear from a wide range of voices and representation from different geographies, we are having the first two questions coming to us via video. We'll take these two questions and then turn to you, President Koroche, for your revised notes. So the first question comes to us from the being introduced to first, Mayol Fiaco in Argentina. She's speaking on behalf of, excuse my pronunciation, Fundación Parra El Studio, which translates in English, "The Foundation for Studies and Research on Women."
I, Mayol Fiaco, from Argentina, analyze the impact of the new pandemic for sustainable protection in the African continent. I, as all other governments, that is specifically the worst, COVID makes a great crisis in terms of health and in terms of economics due to the problems that we deal. Meanwhile, later on, with the crisis by the war in Russia and Indonesia, we are suffering great, great problems. The Nazis started to analyze how to improve workers due to COVID impact, including not only socioeconomic challenges, but also what they call commercial challenges.
This is President of the General Assembly, the ambassador of the global organizations, the ambassador of the Comminga Strugglers and also the International Organization. Thank you for this opportunity to ask the questions during this 2030 and 2031, and as I said, and as I told, and as I said. Only this opportunity to ask the President of the General Assembly questions, the questions we pick before, we don't ask very much questions, which is, those transformations are necessary for that to improve the traditional basis of the 2030, 2031, and 2032.
A result that we're going to have a full-fledged, do-have-financing development conference in 2025. All those big questions, what we are discussing today, are under consideration now in the General Assembly, hopefully under decision by September, and getting, we shall be getting prepared for the financing conference. We have reflected, to this Jean-Baptiste, on the current ecology and the analysis perspective. Thank you much for bringing it up. One part of the challenges we are facing is whether or not we have enough nutrition food today to feed the 8 billion. There are good news and bad news. The good news is that, yes. The bad news is that the distribution of this food is unequal. So the number of people in the world with major nutrition challenges is struggling to survive and sometimes getting into mortal danger, has grown by 200 million in the last few years. Now we are at the level of 350 million people in the world who are stunting or at the verge of famine. But the good news that if we take into consideration the today's technologies only, the today's methodologies only, and it has been reconfirmed by the scientists during the last scientific briefing what we had 10 days ago in the General Assembly, we have the technologies today to feed 10 billion in a sustainable manner. It means by 2050, we shall need at least 30% more food, maybe 50% more food than what we have today. For that, with the today's methodologies, what we use, we are not going to have enough food, we may not have enough straw, and certainly the distribution system and financial system will not be adequate and sufficient. But once again, the good news that it is possible to feed 10 billion in a sustainable manner. Let us just listen to the scientists, use the technologies, and let's turn our eyes to the revision of sustainable food system strategies, which we discussed in July ago. I have very high hopes. But in order to achieve that, we need a real transformation in the agriculture, in agriculture business, and in market, in the revolutions.
And in the world that we would be united. But this are far from being the best of times, and the world is far from being united. Instead, we face the bravest levels of geopolitical division and mistrust in generations. In this context, the SDG Summit must provide both the sky inspiration and concrete solutions. That is why we are welcome, we welcome the co-facilitators.
... invitation. And second, I cannot think of four not talk about LGBTI populations around the globe, and how we were not included in the creation of the SDGs, and how important it is that we talk about this, especially one who are disproportionately affected when it comes to the right to housing, when it comes to access to food, when it comes to the Mediterranean and development situations. And we specifically saw that of COVID-19, and Her Excellency mentioned that when talking about COVID-19 responses, on how much we need to learn from that, how LGBTI populations were left behind, and NGOs like my own had to do the financing and the work on including them in COVID-19 responses. So my question would be, how can we include LGBTI populations in the moving forward of the Agenda 2030, but in all multilateral spaces, not only as those who are disproportionately affected by human rights violations and excluded from development spaces, but also using our expertise? Because we are the ones doing the work on the ground, we know what the issue are. And how do we include ourselves in these spaces, and how do we get excited to participate, like every other groups that were mentioned in Agenda 2030? Thank you so much for your question and your interest.
Yes, I would like to ask the gentleman-
Part of global civil society lies, you find, that our members and partners around the world, civil society activists who seek transformative change, and civil society organizations that uncover cross-human rights violations, are often times facing huge amounts of persecution around the world. Many of them are subjected to restrictions on civic freedoms, including access to international funding.
So coming up, how we can ensure that progress towards SDGs is equitable and inclusive, and that no one is left behind in the pursuit of the sustainable development. My first question. And the second question is, how we can better involve and empower the communities in this society?
Focused on Secretary General's call for commitments, so also build a question made earlier. And the question is this, approaching the political declaration and the SDG Summit, could you speak to current thinking about how commitments, either by member states or civil society and other stakeholders, might be formulated and supported, both in a lead-up to the summit and also following from it? Are there any accountability mechanisms might be considering for follow-up and implementation of commitments? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that.
At these meetings and in resulting political declarations, member states should recognize that advancing science against diseases such as TB, in order to realize the SDGs, falls under duties all states hold to fulfill the right of everyone to enjoy the benefits of scientific progress and its applications, the right to science. States must invest in science and act to make the benefits of science adequately available to all without discrimination. The question Treatment Action Group raises for discussion is, what steps will the General Assembly take to ensure the inclusion of right to science provisions in the SDG political declaration? That one, increase investment in TB research and development, especially for TB vaccines. Two, promote the rapid uptake and implementation of the best available technologies in the fight against TB as a human right. And three, remove legal intellectual property and other pricing barriers that prevent equitable access to these technologies.
Thank you very much for that question. I'm going to ask you, Olga Red.
On my question, my first one is, what steps or measures are being undertaken to ensure that there's an integrated review or assessment of the implementation and progress of the SDGs, to make sure that the progress of one will not result in an address of another, which is currently happening now? And this is connected to my second question on the voluntary national review. How do we strengthen the voluntary national review and local reviews of the SDG implementation to make sure that it's not just a cherry-picking exercise of goal reporting of states? But to really ensure how everybody is involved and through that in the implementation of the SDGs? And lastly, are there plans to conduct dedicated consultations with indigenous peoples? The permanent forum in all indigenous issues is currently happening now, and it's not often that we are here in New York to be able to meet up with the UN. And I think this is an opportunity to also meet with indigenous peoples who are currently here attending the UN session. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that statement. Oh, I wish we had more time. I mean, this is, this is very difficult for us, and very sorry that we're not going to be able to get to all of you. I think we can take two more questions, and I'm going to-
Two questions. The first is, can you reform the UN General Assembly Resolution 2, 5, or 4 that set up the referendum in 1969? Because the referendum is illegal, fought by a civilian, 600 Indonesians and 400 indigenous Papua, and 800,000 people fought the referendum. That's why today we fight in the conflict, and our indigenous people, the foreigner, we call them Papua, National Revolution. Every fight against, with Indonesian security force, and we never stop. Our parents fought against the Indonesian before, because we have to defend, and we have to, according to the indigenous charter of 1973, and then later on, and then listen to this.
Question.
Yeah, so my question is, can you reform the UN General Assembly Resolution 2, 5, or 4, to establish the referendum and the second decision?
We want a very strong political declaration from our heads of state and our leaderships at the level of -- I wasn’t surprised to see political being the number one mission. That certainly, myself, colleague of Master Al Tani, feel. September is first and foremost a political recommit to the goals, and that’s what we’re seeking. In terms of our work currently, we have, myself and Master Al Tani, we brought together the member states of many nations. We’ve heard initial reflections, comments. We’ve brought together, we circulated an elements paper with them in February. We’ve had further consultations, including with consultation with civil society. And once we have the Secretary General’s report out, we hope to issue what’s called zero draft, you know the UN language better than I do, a zero draft in the coming weeks. And we want to then really engage with member states, and we touched out on the content of that zero draft, and working through May, June, July, if need be, to really craft a strong political declaration for the summit. That’s our time scale. In a sense, the last few months, we’ve just been in the foothills. Now, once we lay down the zero draft, we’re making the sense of summit, and that’s where it gets difficult challenging, but that’s where the real action happens. And we really want to keep engaging with yourselves, hearing from you as we go through that process very, very closely.
To put the SDGs again back on top for the 2020. I prolonged here, but I wanted to try my best to cover many of the very important points you have raised today. But again, I think the partnership we have between the province, the civil society community, together with the head of mission and the province is key to the implementation of the SDGs, and you are playing a important role in that. Thank you very much.
Good summary of everything that you heard today, and thank you, President, for convening this town hall, and especially to all of you for being here, for listening, for contributing, and playing your part to accelerate the SDGs. I think we’ll take what the ambassador from Ireland said as a motto, urgency, realism, but also hope, as something to take away. Thank you for inspiring us. Thank you for being here and wishing you a lot of success and all of your efforts to make our world a better place and to implement the SDGs.